So, welcome everyone, Planning Commission meeting of July the 17th, 2024, in the town of Richmond. We have some studio guests and some Zoom guests, so we'll try to keep an eye on everybody's hands for questions. Speak up if we don't notice that you're raising your hand. Is there anyone who would like to make any adjustments to the agenda? Basically, we have one item on the agenda, which is a public hearing for two new districts. Ian, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I'm kind of out of service where I am at the moment, so if I drop out, it'll just be temporarily.
Okay, that sounds good. Yep, we'll count you within the radius of our meeting. So, any changes, additions to the agenda? Just the one public hearing on these two new districts and some associated definitions that we're putting in to make those fly. Okay, seeing no adjustments, we'll ask if there is any public comment at this meeting that is not related to that. If anyone wants to make a comment about anything else, we need to ask about that. Okay, not seeing any hands, not hearing any questions, we'll assume there's none. And we'll move on quickly to the minutes of our last meeting, which was last week on the 10th. That was the meeting rescheduled from the 3rd. The minutes have been posted for a couple of days, so does anyone have any questions about the minutes or additions or changes that they want to make to the minutes? Any of the commissioners want to weigh in on the minutes?
I just a, just a question, and I didn't get a chance to look ahead of time, but where are they posted?
They should be posted on the webpage. If they're not, we could delay approving them until our next meeting.
Yeah, they were, they were the minutes from last week, so they've been, they were posted.
Oh, they were posted Tuesday morning because they were finished Monday night.
Yeah, probably would be prudent to wait, Chris, I think.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I don't see them in the related files for this meeting.
They'd be under the minutes for the, for this meeting, so.
You might just miss them.
Yeah, so they're posted to the 710 meeting. You're right, you're right, Chris.
Oh, yeah, they need to be brought to the relevant meeting, yeah.
Okay, so we will wait on that and we will talk about those meetings and this meeting at our August 7th meeting.
Okay, so we'll kick that off, that's fine.
Yes. Okay, great. So, moving on to our agenda item, which is public hearing for the creation of two new zoning districts in our zoning ordinance. And these two districts are called the Village Residential Neighborhoods districts, and there are two of them. There are the residential areas that are to the north of the river in the village and to the south of the village in the south of the river, but still within the village area. So, people want to know why we would make new districts. So, there are a couple of reasons. One is that we are, you know, continuously reviewing the zoning document to make sure it's what we need. And the residential areas of the village, now, if you look at this map, we can point them out, it's the yellow. So, the red in the middle is the downtown block, the Upper Bridge Street block. So, you can see it's Tilden Ave, Millet Street, Baker Street, Brown's Court, Brown's Trace up there. And then the ones still north of the village, but Esplanade, Pleasant Street, and Church Street, Lemroy Court. So, these are the residential areas in the village that are served by water and sewer and that have special characteristics and the residents have special desires. It was formerly part of what's called the High Density Residential Area, which is that mustard colored with white spots area that goes all the way up the Jericho Road, includes Southview, includes village, you know, Valley View, all of the land up there, which is kind of different, and it is not served by water and sewer. So, this makes a special district called the Village Residential Neighborhoods North that is served by water and sewer. It is walkable to the village. It is essentially within the core, the heart of the village. So, we've made it its own district. Yes, hello, Allison, welcome. The Village Residential Neighborhoods South is that, what are those Xs or something, the little red boxes?
They're red round, round circles.
Red circles or boxes. Those are the neighborhoods that are south of the river, but we still consider them to be part of the village. They are still served by water and sewer. If you look at the big red boxes going around the outside edge, that's the Water and Sewer District. The Water and Sewer Service Area. So.
Dotted line here.
Yeah, that red dotted line is where we have water and sewer. And one of the reasons to make these separate from their underlying district. This, by the way, the Village Residential Neighborhoods South was in the Agricultural Residential District, which is like most of the rest of the town. So, we felt this had special characteristics. It was still really part of the village and it is served by water and sewer. Last summer, in July, the state legislature passed a law called Act 47, which was mandating certain requirements for residential areas served by water and sewer. This is, was their attempt, is their attempt, one of their attempts to increase housing in Vermont. We have a serious housing crisis. So, they felt they had given municipalities the opportunity to increase housing in their core areas and that municipalities hadn't done anything about it, so they were going to mandate it. So, they made special regulations about what you had to do in your zoning for residential areas served by water and sewer. So, that's another reason that we created these districts, because we didn't want to apply those regulations to the whole of the AgRes district. For instance, we wanted to isolate them to the areas that are involved in Act 47. So, those two areas, the one coming out of AR, the other one coming out of HDR are now our village residential areas. And the residents also wanted special protections to keep them residential. That it was important if they were going to have the increased density that Act 47 requires, that they be kept quite residential. You know, that we're, we're not attracting the businesses as we are to our village downtown, the red and the brown, which is the residential commercial areas, which have both residences and commerce. So, that was the reason that we're doing this. And we're going to look at each one of these two districts. They both, each one has its own district and its own regulations, but they're very similar to each other. They're very similar, but we felt they were distinct enough that we would make them into two districts instead of one district.
What are the main differences?
Setbacks, I mean.
Yeah, there's differences in the setbacks. We also wanted to separate them in case we wanted to make any changes in one and not the other, then they would already be separate. So, the Southern, the Neighborhoods South has some language about the round church, you know, protecting the round church, thinking about that. By the way, both of these districts, the Flood Hazard Overlay District takes precedence, because in both of these districts there are areas that are in the flood hazard zone. So, any district, you make the underlying regulations, but if they are in the flood hazard district from the FEMA maps, then those regulations take precedence. So, even though the state has mandated increased density in these residential areas, if it's in a flood hazard overlay district, that doesn't necessarily apply. So. Okay, so that's the premise of the whole thing. Yeah, sure. Can you state your name? That would be great.
Marilyn Johnson.
Yes.
I was just wondering how far west on Route 2 does that yellow lot?
What you're seeing is, is the limits of it.
I know, but where, where does it end and become red? If I'm Route 2, I was just wondering if.
Yes, you are wondering if your house is in it.
It's down to you.
Oh, I'm at.
You are in yellow.
Yeah.
Yes.
But I'm west of the Newt.
Yeah, what's your, what's your lot number, Marilyn?
Yeah, I could see.
Newt is the eastern end.
Yep.
And then.
It goes all the way down to.
Goes west from there.
The, the Residential Commercial District, which is that red-ish, orange-ish, right next to the yellow? That starts with that quad, that apartment building that has four units in it? That's owned by Heidi Borman.
Yeah, so, yeah.
If you, if you look where the end of Tilden is there and you come across, that's right where it starts to go down the hill before the apartment.
Welcome to Richmond, Simon.
Yeah, so all the houses are in the residential district.
Excluding the apartments that are at the bottom.
Excluding the apartments at the bottom, but your house, Marilyn, and the Whitefords are in it, and then the house that was recently sold across the street, they're all in this residential district.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions so far?
So, I only printed out the stuff on my side of the bridge, but I thought the setbacks were the same in both districts. You said that they were different.
Maybe this, maybe they're the let's, well, we can look at the specs. I think maybe we did end up making them the same, Allison, the setbacks.
The iterations that you have, Gary.
Yeah. Okay, so we, we'll talk about that in just a second. Any more questions about the maps or where the extent is? Thompson Road, you can see is in there, the, the intersection of Thompson and the Huntington Cochran Road is in there.
Yeah, and this is, this is, this is the cemetery, the CO48, so there's not going to be a lot of development going on in there, so we kind of left that out. And across the street is, it's, it's vacant. You can't build on that.
That's a conserved land.
Conserve land, exactly.
Hi, it's John Rankin from Church Street. I, I think 47 Church Street appears to be in yellow, but the stripes make it, I'm just checking.
Part of it is.
Part.
Forty-seven Church.
So, can, my, my lot be split?
I'm not sure what your lot is.
So, it should only be the first lot nearest to Bridge Street that's not in the yellow.
When, when you blew up, it became clearer. I'm, thank you.
Okay, yeah. And, you know, there was a question about the condos at the end of Church Street, which, yeah, those little boxes, they theoretically would be in the village, but they're actually part of the farm, the Jericho Settlers Farm Lot, which is AgRes, and they only own the footprint. So, it was a better choice to leave them out of the district. They're still in the AR district. But the, all the surrounding, the land that surrounds them is in the AR district. So, that was a question that we spent some time with.
So, those little blocks are not yellow, because?
They are not yellow. They are still in the AR district.
Yeah, they'd be floating if they were, basically.
They'd be floating, and I mean, that's possible, but it seemed technically, was technically more challenging to do that. So, we did work with regional planning on this mapping question.
Okay, and then this turquoise line that goes under Esplanade Street there. There's a turquoise.
That's the flood plain. Isn't that the flood plain? The turquoise, the greenish line?
Yeah, well, this, this green line is the floodway. The whole thing is the flood plain.
The striped area is the flood plain, and then the floodway is where the water is.
Between these two lines here.
Is actually the river is considered to run when it's flooding.
Yeah, this valley is green, it's right here. And we know that that's all in the floodway.
Okay, so all of that area in between that turquoise green line and the river, it is.
Floodway.
Floodway.
Floods. Where is it the last couple of days?
Well, that's where it floods. I mean, it floods.
I know.
Mostly up to the driveway of the sewer treatment plant. So, that runs right along, parallel to Esplanade. Yeah, and 10 years from now, we don't know where that line will be, but we have to go with what we've got. Okay, any other questions? The green that you see there is Jolena Court, by the way, we're working on that. That green area there.
Which green area?
You point to that?
The adjacent.
Right there, okay.
With the tiny little Jolena Court Road.
There's two lots within that district.
Yep. Okay, two lots. One is the big lot and one is the little tiny lot at the top, which is the community kitchen.
When you say you're working on it, is there a question as to how it would be zoned, or are you just?
The Jolena Court Zone is its own zone. It's going to stay its own zone. That was how it was done originally with the interim zoning, because it was so different from anything else. So, it will still be, but the zoning regulations for that district are likely to change somewhat. So, if you want to know more about that, you can come to some of these other meetings where we're talking about that. Yeah, this, you know, it was, well, I probably don't want to go into it right now, but there's likely to be some changes to the regulations in that district. They will only affect that district. Okay. So, I guess we could start by just looking at the regulations for the two districts, and then we'll talk a bit about the definition changes that we made in order to incorporate what we wanted to in these districts.
So.
So.
Which one do you want to go?
Well, we can look at the north. Let's look at the north district.
Get that up for you soon.
Okay. And you can see that the purpose of it is to provide residential neighborhoods of moderate density within walkable proximity to the services and amenities of the center of Richmond Village. Character of the district is residential. The housing types may include single-family, duplexes, multifamily, and accessory dwellings. And the dwellings may be closely spaced. This is because Act 47 required, requires that we allow a density of five dwelling units per acre. Previously, we had not had that. You know, this town started with one unit per one acre. Yeah. We had increased that somewhat, and now we are required to have five units per acre. This.
Virginia, we currently, we're at one-third or point three?
Well, actually, currently, you're at, you're at what the state says, which is.
Well, so we, before, yeah, before.
It was a third.
I think it was a third, right?
Yeah, it was a third.
The Planning Commission was heading towards a quarter, but actually.
Exactly. We were heading towards a quarter, because many of the lots are already at that size. So, they were non-conforming. We were going to make them more conforming. That seemed like enough for us. The state mandates five, so we're at five. And because five units per acre is required, the minimum lot size has to be a fifth of an acre. That goes together with requiring five units, because if you took one acre and you divided it into separate lots, you could have five, they would be a fifth of an acre. And we've gone to calling it 8,712 square feet.
I have a question, Virginia.
Yes.
When was that act passed? What, in what year?
July 20, of '23, last year, one year ago, or June of, no, it was July of 2023. Yep.
Well, I.
So, so that's the law at the moment. We.
Okay, I, I accept that that's the law at the moment. I'm just really concerned that. Well, first of all, the legislature is changing a lot. A lot of people are retiring and, and, you know, there's a I think there are going to be some different attitudes down there, and unless we're really very comfortable with this law for our village, I, I think we might be a little conservative about going ahead.
Well, it's the law right now, so that's, you know, we have decided that that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, we're not making it any, anymore dense. I mean, it's.
Yeah, we could have made it more dense than that. They have allowed for you to make it more dense. But we elected, and the legislature is currently recommending that there's no density requirements. But they've allowed you to put a density requirement, so we elected to put the density requirement of five units per acre. But what they would like is to have no density limits. So, you would still be regulating the lots to a certain extent by your setbacks and your lot coverage and, you know, so it wouldn't be like a free-for-all, exactly. But they, that is what they're advising communities to do. We are not doing it. We are imposing a density limit. And imposing density limits is something that we haven't really had very much in our ordinance before. You know, it was really, we did it a little bit in the HDR district, but mostly it was when Jolena Court came in with an apartment building, that we had to have a density number. You know, what, what is the density? And that district is 15 units per acre that we are thinking of increasing, but we don't want to talk about that right now. So, more on that later.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, as I understand it, this law, you say it's the law now, but it isn't the law that's saying you must change your zoning and then it will take effect. The law has taken effect.
Yes.
So, the DRB and zoning administrator have to act as if this has already gone.
Yes, exactly. So, even if we don't change the language in our zoning, the zoning administrator has to follow the law, which was passed last July, to allow five units per acre. So, the only thing that we're doing here, I mean, we're putting it into our zoning ordinance, so people who don't know about Act 47 will be, have a heads up. And changing some of our parameters to make it a little easier to do this, making the setbacks just a little bit smaller and the lot coverage a little bigger, so that you can actually put a dwelling unit on a fifth of an acre.
And that's the salient point, very deep, because while, while the law is the law, it's the parameters that, that that ultimately are going to matter here.
Yeah, and so.
And what the town has control over. You know, we don't have control over that, that, you know, 8712 square feet per lot.
So, but the zoning administrator would have to administer, administrate the other setbacks and so forth if we didn't change the setbacks, so. Okay, traffic speeds are low. Natural amenities will be provided by green spaces, vegetated front yards, and street trees. We already have that essentially. And the flood hazard overlay district will control the development of any lot within its borders, so you are not required to allow the five units per acre if you're in the flood hazard district that says you can't put any more principal structures here, then that supersedes Act 47.
And how is that flood district determined?
By the maps.
Well, I, I wonder how updated are the maps, like what happened last?
That's what we've got. We can only use the maps that we've got. We don't have any other way to do it, so.
No, I, I, I understand and respect that. I, I just have a, a major concern. I, I know this probably sounds spooky, but one year ago to the same date, I mean, what, what is, somebody's trying to tell us something.
Over time, we will see what happens. I mean, this major of resiliency issues that we need to confront here. Anyway, we, that's beyond our scope right at the moment.
I, I understand that, Virginia. I'm being a pain in the neck, but I'm very upset over what's happened.
Yeah, I know. All right, so permitted uses, an accessory dwelling is permitted if, to a single-family home. And you will see when we come to that language that accessory dwellings are only allowed to be called accessory dwellings for single-family homes. Accessory structure, that's like a shed, one-family house, a duplex, which is a two-family house, a three-to-four-unit multifamily house, which was not universally popular among the neighbors, but this is now also required that you permit three-to-four-unit dwellings in residential areas served by water and sewer.
How does that tie to lot size?
Per, per unit, so, so if you have a four, four-unit multifamily.
And so, anchor them?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, exactly. So, that has to.
Sure, but still, you have to have these.
That the multifamilies are required to abide by the density regulations. The only thing that isn't is accessory structures, which are exempt essentially from density.
Eighty years.
So, if you have a .2-acre lot, a one-fifth acre lot, and you have a single-family home on it, you may put an ADU, even though it exceeds the density. But that's the only one. A duplex, you have to have enough for two units, so you'd have to have .4.
Point four.
Four unit, you'd have to have .8.
Right, okay.
But a single-family home, you can double the density by putting an ADU. That's part of the law also. As we understand it. The language is not perfect of the state law, anyway. Some conditional uses. So, those are uses that would go to the DRB. You could have a childcare facility with more than six children. You can have an elder care facility, and we will get to the definition of elder care facility, because that's new, and that's something that we put in to allow there to be, you know, nursing homes in our neighborhoods, because that's where they belong. A park or open space and a PUD, which is a residential planned unit development. There's not going to be much room for those in these two districts, but it, it can be done. And that allows you to move things around a little bit to, you know, put things maybe closer together and leave some part of it open. You can make some adjustments in the parameters if you call it a planned unit development. All right, so we get to the residential density. The maximum base residential density is one dwelling unit for every eight thousandths of 112 square feet. And the dimensional requirements, the lot size, you have to have enough to allow for five units per acre, so that's one-fifth acre. Lot shape is the same as it always has been. The lot frontage, we reduced a little bit. Uh, the lot frontage, we reduced a little bit. Because we felt if you have a point two acre lot, you may not be able to have seventy five feet of um road frontage. So it can be, the frontage can be a little bit smaller. Maximum lot coverage, we went from thirty?
That was in, this was in the HDR? At one point, it's thirty, yes.
I think it was thirty, the maximum lot coverage. We went to fifty, because it's pretty hard to put a house on a fifth of an acre. With only thirty percent lot coverage, it's gonna be very small.
So.
So we allowed there to be a little more lot coverage.
So lot coverage is impervious surfaces, so. Or what?
More flooding.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I joke, but not really.
Yeah, this is, this is a conundrum that, you know, the way we all have dealt with stormwater up until now is by just having lots of open land and requiring enough open land to take care of the water infiltrating into the land. If you're gonna require these densities, then you need a stormwater system. You know, you need more attention being paid to it, which is what our planning department is working on right now, obviously frantically trying to. Um, yes.
So in uh like on Tilden Avenue, somebody could build a house thirty five feet high?
Yes.
How high is that sixty? How's how high is a three story?
About.
Yeah.
Three stories plus a A-frame roof would be thirty five.
That's what you got, right? Down the road.
Uh, I'm thinking, not on Tilden. Oh, no, that's probably twenty five.
Is it? Isn't that sick?
The Beehive. How high is?
Oh, the Beehive, you're right.
Yeah.
Well, it's in section four point eleven, which is reference.
That's about, I would guess that's thirty five, but I don't know.
No, I think I think you're right.
Yeah, in section four point eleven, it says that you can, it can go a little higher if nobody lives there. Like above thirty five feet, if nobody lives above thirty four feet.
It's all predicated upon.
Is that because of the fire cats?
Okay. Fire trucks.
Well, yes, so that has always, it's traditionally been in many towns zoning ordinance. It's always thirty five feet, thirty five feet, because if you don't have a ladder truck, thirty five feet. However, we understand that, you know, especially if you're putting a multi-unit building, it's gonna have to be sprinkled, it's gonna have to, you know, there are other ways to make sure that people can get out, because you have sixty five story buildings, obviously. They can't be hindered by the lack, by even having a ladder truck.
Did you say sixty five stories?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, there are buildings sixty five stories, right? Yeah.
Not in the village.
No, not in the village.
Yeah.
So, you know, some of the fire members, the members of the fire department will say that it's kind of irrelevant that we are stuck with this thirty five foot number. And one of the strategies that the state is looking at is going up, you know, if you can't go out, you don't want to use your valuable farm and forest land. You don't, your village is full from on the ground, where to go is up. I mean, that's what some of the other towns in in uh Williston and Burlington, South Burlington, that's what they're doing is they're going up. We are not going there yet. And we hope, we probably hope we don't go there, because we don't want the sky crowded either and the light cut off and all of those things, but the number of thirty five feet is not like set in stone, so. And in fact, it's not, we don't need, you don't need to know this right now, but in Act forty seven, it allows for, it requires towns to allow affordable housing developments that meet the standard of the state of an affordable housing development to add forty percent density beyond the density and to go one story higher than your restriction than the municipal restriction.
I don't know that it's an issue, but also thinking of water and sewer handling going up, certainly water pressure as well. Uh, just to throw that.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to throw that in.
I mean, that, since every place would have to be, have a an ability to get water and so on, that would be checked out. I assume that they have ways of pumping water to higher levels.
Right, for the for the fire department, I'm just thinking of constructing something like that that goes up.
Yeah, well, anyway, I can tell you in the statute, you are required, if it meets the definition of an affordable housing, and we will be putting that into our zoning ordinance, it's already the law, but it'll go into our zoning ordinance as a special section, we're working on it. You are required to exceed the density by forty percent and go one story higher.
Right.
So this is to try to get affordable housing, you know, which.
It's the carrot. That's what it is, it's a carrot.
Well, that's the stick. Wouldn't you say?
No, I mean, they're allowing you to go another story if you do affordable housing, that's.
For the developers, it's it's the carrot, yeah, for the towns, it's the stick.
Depends on your approach.
Right.
Definition of affordable housing.
Well, there's a, that's a good one. There's a definition of an affordable housing development. It has to have, I believe, twenty percent of the units have to be
Income sensitive.
Have to agree with the affordable definitions that are prescribed by the state. There's a whole chart that has affordable. It relates to what the rent is, if it's a rental unit. And you have to also find out the person you rent it to has to have an income of a certain level. It's very complicated. So there's an income sensitivity piece, there's a rent controlled piece. They have to be at a certain number. And there have to be a certain number of those units in the building for it to be considered an affordable housing development.
Right.
That is laid out in Act forty seven, and it will be laid out in our statute.
Do you know those numbers?
Um.
Level in the rent level?
There's a whole chart, and there are different levels of affordability. So like, you could have what's called eighty percent of the average median income for Chittenden County, which is the district we're in. So if it's affordable at eighty percent, then uh I believe the rent is about like fifteen hundred dollars for a one bedroom.
Yeah, like twelve fifty for a studio.
Studio is twelve fifty. I mean, we've been looking at this a lot for Jolena Court. Because it's relevant to their project, but or if it's deeply affordable, which is only gonna be done by an affordable housing developer, like Champlain Housing Trust or one of those people who can afford to subsidize this, you can make it affordable at thirty percent. That's for people who really have super low incomes. You can make it affordable at fifty percent, at sixty percent, at eighty percent. This chart lays out all these sets of numbers. So. Um, and it's complex and it's almost always going to be done by an affordable housing developer and not, no regular developer can afford to keep the rents at that level. They can't pay their loans off, because costs are so high, anyway. Um, it's gonna be a lot more of that when we talk more about Jolena Court District, so, but luckily that's not in your district. All right, we talked about the setbacks and we have reduced them a little bit. I was trying to get the numbers from the HDR, what they're reduced from. Um. Which section is it? I'm back.
I'll pull that up for you.
So the principal structure, so that's like the house. You have to have at least ten feet of front setback. And for an accessory structure or an accessory dwelling unit, it has to be ten feet behind the front of the principal structure to make it accord with the fact that it's supposed to be an accessory and not the principal structure. Okay, so right now, in, is this the HDR? In the HDR, the front yard yard setback is twenty feet. But a lot of the houses in the village north are not twenty feet back anyway. So ten feet is more like a village, um, where they're fairly close to the sidewalk or fairly close to the road. Uh, so.
It's the ten, start the measurement at ten feet. From the edge of the road, the middle of the road, the sidewalk?
It's from the edge of the road.
No.
Right, the property, the property line.
From the property line.
So it's from the front property line, which is generally the edge of the road, the edge of the width of the road or the sidewalk.
It's a, it's the right of. Take the right of way, measure it from the road right, the edge of the road right of way.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not the edge of the road.
Well, not the traveled part of the road, the road right of way, which is a certain distance either from the center line or.
Depending on how many rods that road is.
Right.
So on and so forth.
Measured in different.
But it's measured from the property line. So.
Virginia, a question about accessory dwellings setback through numerous um, outbuildings, garages, barns in my neighborhood, some on Tilden, hit a right on the property line. Could they, and I'm not weighing in on whether this would be good or bad, but could they be turned into accessory dwellings? Are they too close?
Well, I mean, that that would be a determination that the zoning administrator would make. Um, if you, you can take a, a, an accessory structure, let's say that it is non-conforming, and you could potentially turn it into an accessory dwelling unit. We would, we would promote that um a- at this point in time, but if you're going to set a standalone one, um, you're gonna have to meet the setbacks.
A new one.
A new one, correct.
You're making a new one, but if it's already existing and non-conforming.
Yep. And it's pre-existing. Yep, and that would be up to Tyler at this point.
All right, thank you.
I'm not sure I read that the same way, but.
Yeah.
A non-conforming existing garage could be turned into a accessory dwelling, even if it doesn't meet the setbacks.
Potentially, yeah, because the pre-existing structure, non-conforming, legal.
Yeah.
There's, there's, you know, that that's something that we haven't been faced with yet.
Yeah.
Um, um, uh, you know, I'm I'm your assistant zoning administrator, but the zoning administrator makes the decision. Yeah, I'll get out of his way.
Yeah.
So.
So. We'd promote that.
We might ask him, I guess, what he, how he would rule on that, because we don't address it, you're correct, exactly.
Yeah.
In this zoning.
If it's a conversion.
So, yes.
I guess, uh.
What's your name? Could you say?
Paula Boyne.
Okay.
Uh, we live on uh West Main Street, and it's a neighborhood.
Okay.
Uh, and this is the reason that I'm here, is this is kind of what I'm interested in, because we have a garage that is on the property line.
Yes.
Been like that for however long. Um, it has to be torn down and rebuilt. Because it has foundation issues, there's been drainage issues forever.
Yeah.
And so way of considering if we're gonna rebuild it, putting an apartment above it.
Yeah.
Uh, we've talked to Tyler a little bit, and it seems like the problem I mean for us is that the the garage is small enough, twenty by twenty, that you know, you add a second floor, that apartment is gonna be three hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah.
And so, you know, to make it reasonable, we're, we're thinking to ourselves, hmm, we should extend it by ten feet, make a six hundred square foot apartment. But the, but the problem seems to be like, I hear from you saying like, we would really encourage, let's try and garages
Right.
in the living structures, and I agree with you, like, if we're gonna add living in town, to me, it seems like a great way to do it.
Right.
But as soon as we add ten feet to the building, it's not conforming. And in our case, like, when I look at the map, you know, the village north, there's a lot of narrow lots.
Right.
And so I look at this, you know, ten, according, when I talked to Tyler, he said you'd have to move it five feet, according to this, the side yard setback, what's to mean now is ten feet.
Where, where are you currently? You're right on the line?
The house is on the line, or the garage is on the line, so where our place is, if I move that garage ten feet over, it basically cut off my backyard from the house, and it's like, you're now putting it in this, I don't know if I wanna.
Yeah.
Right.
So I guess I'm questioning, like, why do we, what's the purpose of this side yard setback in light of the fact that, as the previous person was saying, you know, a lot, a lot of this neighborhood, there are quite large garages and structures on the property line, like the, the nature of the uh, area now is that there isn't this setback, like that's the historical character of the neighborhood. Yeah.
Pre-existing, non-conforming.
Yes, and and I guess that's the character of the neighborhood on top of it, not just this, so I guess I'm wondering, to me, this is a a hindrance to getting.
So to expand, to expand that structure specifically is a hindrance, yeah, because you're, you're making it more non-conforming, which is what, you know, legally, you don't want to do, so to speak, and that's hard for Tyler to to fit that, it's, it makes it a, you know, a round peg in a, in a square hole kind of deal for him. Um, he he's, he's a, he's a by-the-book guy. Yeah, which is what you want out of your zoning administrator, obviously. Um, but yeah, once you, you have a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, but it's legal. It's a, it's pre-existing, you know, but once you take that structure and you expand it, you're making it more non-conforming, that's not allowed. So.
And these numbers are less than what's currently in the zoning ordinance. And the setback numbers are not dictated by Act forty seven.
I think he was saying that because it was an existing structure and it's currently a garage, that the five foot setback was the setback.
Because it's an accessory structure.
Correct.
Yeah.
And even though we were going to add onto it, it would still be the garage, so the five foot setback held. However, moving it at all closes off, uh, we have like a small backyard, downhill, big backyard, so it shuts everything into this team.
Right.
Doesn't make it happen for us.
I mean, what, I guess I'm, I'm curious, like, what is the purpose of the, of having these setbacks? What is it doing for us?
Well, the purpose is because many people have spoken to us about having setbacks, so that everybody is not living, as they say, right on top of each other, so. Um.
So we want, we want high density, but we don't want high density.
Right, well, this is kind of, well, you know, not everybody wants high density, that's the thing, is that this was mandated by Act forty seven, that we have this higher density, so this was kind of a compromise between what is and, you know, your kind of issue, which, I don't know, maybe we see how we can work around that.
Neighbor doesn't care. He's like, yeah, I don't care if you build the garage bigger, it's fine with me. So in that case, I feel like, why is that, why is that still an issue? If the, if the neighbor is like, man, go ahead, I understand, if he, if he's like, no, I I do not want that there, then that's.
We've gotta have an empirical way of of administering.
Right.
Can't do it by feel.
We can't.
Or emotion, you know, it has to be empirical more than anything. Because one, one neighbor, one neighbor on on another property might not feel the same way, so.
But why does that matter if it's his property and he doesn't care if it's on his property? Why, why does that matter if we want to build? He owns it.
I I think it's, it's, it's an emotional issue. I mean, it's, 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 when you're administering the zoning code, we need to have, it needs to be black and white. That's really what it, what it comes down to.
So that would be an exception if the neighbor is like.
That would, yeah, I would, that would help your case if you were going for a, a variance on that. For sure, you would want your neighbor's buy-in for the DRB to say.
Because I can see absolutely in some places where you wouldn't want a big structure blocking your whatever, it just, yeah, that I, I totally understand that.
And there are privacy issues too.
Yeah, that's not the case in this situation. It fits where it is and makes sense where it is for both parties, so it's.
It is, I mean, it's, it's lot, it's lot specific.
Yeah.
Yeah, it really is.
So would they be able to get a variance, do you think, for something like?
Uh, that would be up to the DRB.
And this is my, uh, yeah, and this is where I feel like it gets, it's, it's, it still becomes a roadblock, because, you know, in our conversation with Tyler, he presents as you, you know, you'll only be successful through variance application or that process if for some reason you can't meet this setback.
Right.
And it's not that we physically can't, it's that, is that it would change the kind of feel of our yard and house, and how those interact.
It's not good.
In a, in a way that, yeah, like, and so, in my conversation with him, he made it sound like, that's not good enough, you could move that, the garage.
Right, so, and and that's the limit that the DRB would be working up it.
Well, yeah, and so that's.
They don't like to give variances really, because it sort of undermines the the fact that you have a regulation and you either are going to abide by it or you're not going to abide, if you give a lot of variance. The fact that you have a regulation and you either are going to abide by it or you're not going to abide, if you give a lot of variances, then it sort of. Weakens the regulations, I guess, I don't know, Gary?
The, the other reason for, um, setbacks is so you can work on your building.
Yeah, absolutely.
Suddenly you have a neighbor that. You don't get along with and you can't do any maintenance. But, I mean, if GC is willing to do something, do boundary adjustment and trade X number of feet. Around what you need for something that maybe he wants, or they're, you got a long lot on it.
Yeah.
And then meet it that way.
Yeah, one to one swap where where you're not really making the lot any less or more noncompliant.
Yeah.
So if it's, if you need two thousand square feet, two thousand square feet for one lot, two thousand square feet for the other lot.
They may only need like three hundred square feet.
I believe that can be done, no, I don't know if that can be done administratively, I'd, that'd be up to Tyler, I'd have to look at the regulations, but.
So we, we talked about, you have talked to us about these setbacks, Gary, I mean, are these? From your point of view, as a builder, a reasonable set of setbacks? Should, some people want more and some people want less, that's the problem.
Well. Uh, my goal, I mean, what I wanted to see out of this is that. If somebody, if we're gonna allow five units to make sure that. The option for five single family homes is in there so that we're not only creating. Usable space, it has to be used for multifamily, because I would much rather live next to five single family homes on small lots. Than, uh, a three or four unit apartment house, that's my own preference, and I know when I've tried to sell both. At least the people I talked to really much rather not like be in a duplex with a dividing wall and stuff, you know, the shared wall, so. That's been my goal, and when I looked at this, how much setback can? Can you put, you know, make five usable lots, uh, I came up with. Ten feet, I know when Adam Wood was on the board.
Right.
Builder in town, he kind of come up with that same number.
Right.
I mean, not that it can't be done with a little more setback, but, um. I think ten.
But these seem okay from your building point of view.
Hey, I was just gonna add, just notice when we look at the map, you know, there are these two residential neighborhoods we're talking about, south of the river and north. When I look at the. You know, lots south of the river, but they're much bigger than the lots.
Right.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I, it was probably a rare situation south of the river where ten feet is gonna cover the problem. When I look at the north, I mean, there's a lot of narrow lots where I, I had. That this could be a legitimate.
Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, you're, that, the whole north area is ripe for infill development and and accessory dwelling units. Now, I mean, it's not gonna be a lot of subdivisions going on in the north, I mean, it's gonna be a lot more in the south, obviously.
But in, in, in their case, would, if they made the apartment above the garage the same size as the current footprint of the garage.
Mm-hmm.
And that's fine.
Would that be good?
That, that would be a a call that Tyler would have to make.
He said, when, when we spoke with them, he was like, yes, you could do that.
I.
Make it the same size.
I can't remember the details, it seemed like if we were starting over with a new building, because the foundation, everything. That's what I mean, but I can't remember. If that.
Hmm.
Made it so that it had to be moved. In other words, like, none of the original building is gonna remain, and so, I can't remember.
Each lot is unique. Um, Chris, Chris had a question for you.
Okay, Chris.
And it's.
And then.
It's under the chat. Uh, Virginia, we have house guests tonight.
Okay.
You would have a point without me, do you mind if I drop off at eight?
Uh, do you mind if I drop off at eight? Okay. Are you gonna be here till the end?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so as long as everybody else stays, Chris.
Thanks, don't wanna, don't wanna leave you alone.
Yeah. All right, so, yes.
Um, Virginia, Dave Neely, and I live in, in North.
Yes.
Street, um, just, uh, at some point, I'm. Gonna share my thoughts in a hopefully, uh. Zoning regulations, including setbacks, are part of a planning commission and town governance responsibility. To make sure that, um, neighbors can deal with each other in an organized fashion. Over a long period of time, and so. It, you know, if, if you didn't have setbacks, just because one situation where you have a. You know, a historic, uh, building and plenty of room to to an existing home. Probably, it sounds like your situation, I, I, you know, then then it may work great. But there are situations, um, even one that I've noticed around town. Uh, where you have a historic structure and a newer structure, and it's right by the property line. Um, and there's a hulking add-on to the garage, you know, it goes way up, and, um, you know, and I'm thinking of the Merits Home. On Coverland Road.
Oh, yeah.
If their house was oriented in the other direction.
Yeah.
And that, that build was added, it would have been a highly unfortunate situation for them. They happen to be oriented the other way, and there's this huge cedar hedge, so they probably don't, I've never talked to them about it, they probably don't care about it, but it's pretty. You know, ominous, or, you know, it's living on top of each other almost, as, as you said, and. Yes, Gary, about setbacks, I'm gonna advocate for higher setbacks, in particular in the back, because I feel like. Richmond can decide, and that's the element of local control, that the state. Act forty seven did not.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh. You know, developers, they may only be able to build four houses on an acre. You know, the, our regulations won't prohibit five, but in fact, if they wanna build si- single family instead of duplexes. Then they can maybe only build four on that acre. Or subdivide.
Well, actually, Act forty seven, the way the law is written, it says. You have to make regulations that allow for five units per acre, so. You know, I mean, you can't always, because there might be a wetland or a hill or a.
Uh, the builder could build a smaller house if they.
So they can build a smaller house.
Not saying you can't do it through a fifteen foot rear setback, for instance.
So, it's about, it's interesting, but I mean, the, the north neighborhood, there are probably very few lots that are even happening.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've actually looked at.
Ours is too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, so, I think the reality is. I don't see, I don't see much change happening, because there's, uh, there's not that much room to. Twenty years from now, I don't see much change in density, because there's not.
Right.
Well, this, this neighborhood was already in accordance with.
Still units per acre, right, isn't that?
Yeah, we could, you could change it so the density would be increased, you know, let's say it's ten per acre. Well, I'm gonna be able to do that, it's, it's to go up.
But with these, with these regulations, yeah, I don't.
Right.
It seemed like it's gonna be.
Well, other people have pointed that out, that there isn't going to be much change, and I think that is. Uh, what most of the people who live there want.
I guess my frustration is.
So.
I think there are situations where it could make sense. Like, you know, I think, I think my situation wouldn't change the character of the neighborhood at all, you. And, yeah, but yet. There are, you know, there are rules that maybe make sense, but there's no flexibility, it seems like to. To deal with a situation where it does make.
They're based on the current conditions and lot configurations in the town, for sure.
Yeah.
But it is really ten units if you use accessory dwellings.
Right, could you do that, or like?
Yeah, so.
Single family accessory, single family accessory, all of that on a one acre?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think density is gonna go up in our neighborhood, not, I won't see it, but. I know, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna save my spiel, but it's gonna, it's gonna go up in a generation from now.
Wow.
Yeah.
You know, I, I really feel like it's going to.
Well, I think.
And maybe good policy, but.
Greg, Greg Smith, you know, that's an acre that he sold with his house, like behind, uh, Carol Adams. So. Interesting to see somebody can actually.
Is that uphill from you?
You know, Carol Adams lives.
Yeah.
You, you know, Greg. Um, I think, you know, where the powers built the new duplex.
Yeah, yeah.
Across the street. Uh, Greg Jean Smith, right, that's way not to long go, his, his house. At Brown House, so wraps back behind, it was a whole acre that, I forgot, KJ and Sasha.
Oh, KJ and Sasha.
Yeah, they have a whole extra acre besides.
Yeah, on the other side that splits the stream, right?
Right, yeah, next, yeah, they got waterfront.
Is it buildable, buildable?
No, it's not.
I mean, a lot of that land is not really buildable.
But anyway, you could see somebody thinking about.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is a conundrum that has been faced, is that the efficient. Place from a planning point of view to put new structures, houses, is where there is water and sewer. Where there is infrastructure, where there is roads, it's not out where you have to build new roads to get there, where you have to extend the water and sewer.
Right.
You know, that's not where it's financially efficient. To add residents, so. The emphasis has been adding them in the places where the infrastructure is already there. Which is in the village centers and in the downtowns. And, you know. It's not what we're used to in Vermont, but. Uh, people don't have a place to live.
Yeah, it's really interesting to hear, I mean, this, I'm gonna say the pressure, I'm, I'm like. Dave, and that it's nice neighborhood with kids running around, uh, and and right, it'll all change, but the. We wanna do that, and the state doesn't wanna come up with money to extend the water and sewer, I mean. Because nobody, you know, right now, the. If you want water and sewer, you have to pay to get it to your house, right? And we, you know, we saw down Gateway started coming up with numbers, and it's millions.
Right.
Right, millions to do that, and all of a sudden.
Yes.
You know, how do, how do you put that into your, you know, your cash cost, but, uh, so with the state putting this out, it seems, though, not. Not that I'm looking to get water and sewer, anybody else.
Well, the housing committee is, though, because they say, you know, if you wanna build anywhere but right in the center of the village. In any significant amount. Yeah, and where, up the Jericho Road is probably the only place that, but, you know. And, and that would require changing the ordinance, which is possible, you know, the allocation ordinance of water and sewer was only written, it was written by the select board. The select board could write a new water and sewer allocation ordinance, they'd have to do the public outreach, and it wouldn't likely be popular. But, you know, that's something that's on their list of things to look at, is. Can we take water and sewer somewhere else if we want housing? Do we want housing? Well, that's the question. You know, some people want housing, some people don't want housing, it's, it's.
Virginia, some men will view, can I just? Give like, one, one, one slide in my brain about what's, what's gonna happen in the Goodwin Bake, what I call the Goodwin Baker.
Sure, yeah, on Millet Street.
Uh.
Which is in the RC district.
Correct, so I live on thirty one Millet, um, with my family, we straddle. Uh, Millet and Baker.
Okay.
My wife and son and I live there, and what. Um, what I see happening on Baker Street over time, um, is. Maybe best exemplified, uh, uh, on forty seven and seventy five, which are. The Gavin's house and Noreen and Louise's house, so they're modest sized, modest. You know, they're modest houses, um, uh, you know, in the grand scheme of things, you know, who knows what they would get today? You, you and I might consider it expensive, but, you know, they're in the fifteen hundred and two, I'm just guessing, fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet. Their lot size is probably, um, they have larger lots, they're probably point three to point four and change.
Yeah.
Uh, Louise and Noreen built a, uh, a wood shop. Um, accessory structure, not dwelling.
Right.
And the Gavins have a, a really nice big garden on their space. So, at some point when, uh, when those two families, um, uh. You know, sell those, sell those homes.
Hmm.
Um, my best guess is that, you know, a, a young family who wants the village life. Who wants to live in Richmond for the good schools, all the same reasons that I, my family moved there, um, you know. So many of us here live there, um, buy, buys those.
Right.
Properties, right, and, you know, if they're enterprising, um, they, you know, they don't. There's a low probability they want the wood shop. They turn it, they turn it into a, an access, an accessory dwelling.
Hmm.
Um, you know, you, uh, they're probably not gonna garden the same way when Gavin gardens. And they'll probably put an accessory dwelling there, it may even be subdivisible, I don't, I don't know the specifics of it, right? And so, all of a sudden, those modest sized and valued properties. Become relatively, um, more valuable and. Trendy towards the expensive side, so, uh, after they're ready to move on. So we're looking at forty to fifty years now, what, what happens to those properties? They either. They either go to a wealthy person who want the wealth, relatively wealthy person who wants that, that lifestyle, or they go to investor. And, and either local investor or corporate investor, and that's what's happening nationwide, and so. So, what's. What, uh, on the face of it, appears to be really good housing policy, and, you know, and I wanted to start by s- by saying that. I think that the, uh, planning commission has worked really hard and is well intentioned, um. I happen to disagree with how aggressively the state has, has come in with Act forty seven, and, you know. Um, but, you know, what, what at face value is great policy. Hat, may have some unintended consequences, because you may have affordable housing in, in, in the rental market. But you don't have affordable homeownership anymore at those two properties, and so, we're asked, you know. What's good, what's bad, and. I can't make that value ju- judgment for everybody around this table or out in the ethernet, but. Um, what I wanted to say today was that, um, something will be lost in, in our neighborhood. When this happens in forty, fifty years from now, I, I just wanted to say that today, something's gonna be lost, and. And my son, um, who's almost thirteen. Has a half a dozen friends and a whole, and another crew that he's run the neighborhood with. You know, for the past thirteen years, and he's gone to school with them, he's gonna graduate from MMU with them. And he will have those lifelong friendships, and. Is that trade-off, you know, is that important for the town, or is housing more important? Again. You know, I get the policy decisions that are behind this, I'm just saying, I just wanted to say today that something will be lost. And I, I find it regrettable.
Do you not think that it's kind of already, that ship has sailed?
And, and I, and I, uh, um, and I, I have no issues with with the rentals, uh, with the rentals in our neighborhood, they've enriched our neighborhood, that they absolutely have, really great people. Um, and I'm glad it's a part of the mix, but, uh, but I think it's the right balance now. And, uh, you know, again, my, just from personal experience, my friend, my, my son is friends with kids whose parents own the houses and that have lived there. Um, there's, uh, one young man, um, whose dad has rented for ten plus years and, and he's kind of part of the crew. But there's, everybody else is, you know, the one to four year stay. It, it's just different and again, the housing policy may trump that, but that community that we have in our neighborhood is, is gonna go to the wayside in forty or fifty years and and for me, that's regrettable, so.
Like a lot of other things are gonna change in forty or fifty years.
Absolutely, yeah. I do, you know, uh, my last thing and then I'll be completely done, is that I do think that there are a couple of things that we can do in these zoning regulations. And, you know, to the extent that I fully scratched the surface on them and it's relatively complicated stuff. I, I would like to see, um, the setbacks uh, go in the other direction, or at least, I mean, stay in the, stay the same. It's certainly like the backyard setback, I think that's important. Um, I don't know if it's possible to look at some, uh, landscaping requirements in our zoning. Um, you know, I find, uh, in like shielding of, like when we have PDUs and even like a four, a, a multi-dwelling unit of three or four, you know, should, uh, should dumpsters be shielded? Um, I think that, you know, it's a, it's the little things.
Right.
Uh, that
Well, they're not allowed in the front yard, we put that in at least.
You know, and, uh, you know, uh, so, uh, I'm kind of, and, and an old guy, cause you know, like, I, I'm in favor of, uh, of, of strict noise ordinances. Because there's gonna be the DUI, um, uh, ADU builder, you know, working after work nights. I, you know.
That's us.
You know?
Start with the F thirty-fives and go.
That's the job, that's the job, and you know, the burden on the planning commission is to make it so that that neighbors don't have to tussle, right? That these are the rules and they're fair and, and set rules.
Right, and what we do is we walk the line between the people who don't want that and the people who do want that, you know, I mean, if you're the one who wants to do the building or make the noise, then you would like it to be allowed. And if you're the one who doesn't want it, then you don't want it to be allowed. That's why we like all opinions on the planning commission, so we can talk about these things.
Administrative aspect of it too, how do you administer this? And that's, that's where we come in, that's where my office comes in, is, is we really look into this and we bring Tyler or whoever the zoning administrator is and get his or her opinion on that. Um, the administration is a really important part of this aspect, is this, can, can you enforce this? And you know.
Right.
You know, noise ordinances are notoriously difficult to enforce.
The more, the more regulations you have, the more people you have to have if you're going to have people abide by them.
Yeah.
You have to enforce them, so you have to have more staff, you know, it's expensive to have a lot of regulations. So that's another line that we walk, kind of, not to require that we have so many regulations of every factor that we don't have enough people to do the work and we don't wanna hire another whole person or whatever, anyway.
Yeah, we're, we're reactive more than proactive, you know, we, we, we react more than I think.
Thank you so much for letting me say.
Yeah, no, and you know, it's, it's sad, I mean, I think there are modern, many things about the world that are going to be sad forty or fifty years, but I won't be here either, so. My children and grandchildren will deal with it and they'll, it'll be a new normal for them, anyway. And this is your guy for building single-family homes and Matt Farisi now on the DRB, they're all in favor of home ownership as the basic step for wealth building that we have in this country, you know, is single-family home ownership, so trying to make that plausible is a goal. Anyway, thank you.
Balance.
For your thoughts. All right, um, okay, so we can think about the setbacks a little bit more.
Yep, so I have that down.
There's some, um, slight standards for site design, which address a little bit of these issues. Parking shall be located at the side or the rear of the building, if possible. Uh, you know, all the ones that are pre-existing where the cars park in the front yard. They're there, they're grandfathered, but putting something new unless it's in front of the garage door or in the driveway, obviously. It's should be not in the front yard, trying to keep the green space in the front. Waste containers and dumpsters shall be located behind or on the side of the principal accessory structures such that they are not visible from the road. Front yards vegetated. Street and yard trees are encouraged, we went back and forth about required and courage, you know, street trees, there's not in many places room for street trees, there's no buffer strip between the sidewalk and the road, there's no sidewalk maybe, whose, whose trees are they? You know, is this something the town is gonna have to maintain if there are street trees, so we settled on just encouraging them. It's optional, but um, it seemed to be not possible for us to actually require that in this kind of situation. Residential parking, so this is another thing that Act two fifty manned, I mean, Act forty-seven, sorry, mandated. Was that you may only require one parking space per dwelling unit.
Regardless of size.
Regardless of size, regardless of anything, you may only have, you may only require, now the developer can put more if they want, but many developers, you know, especially a multifamily house, housing, are not going to want, they're expensive to make and maintain parking spaces. They're not gonna wanna put more parking spaces, it does increase the cost of housing if you put more parking spaces. So, one parking space per dwelling is all that can be required. And some people think that's not enough, there's a big, the Jolena Court discussion about this right now, is that enough parking? You know, the planning world is going towards using up less land for parking so that we can have more land for dwellings or whatever, or backyards, not parking. But for right now, that's the state laws, you can only require one for a dwelling. You may require one for an ADU. Even though it's considered not to be an additional piece of density, anyway. And then the multifamily housing standards we introduced to try to help make people feel a little more comfortable with multifamily buildings. And there's a whole section that we're gonna talk about when we get to it, about multifamily housing standards. So. Anything else in here people would like to talk about? Planned unit developments are allowed. If you have the density for it, if you have the land available, you can have multiple units. They can be in a variety of formations, single-family, multifamily. But it does have to meet the density.
So that's the north.
So that's the north, the south. So, this is pretty much the same, purpose is to provide housing that's protected to a certain extent within walkable proximity to the services of the center of Richmond. Um, and it is to help provide a transition from the AgRes district to the village districts. And provide, continue to provide a residential surrounding for the iconic round church. Similar kind of features of the district. Um, we have in this section, the historic viashet of the round church is maintained with neighborhood residences and green spaces, round church events can continue to be as they have been. It's, they're considered non-conforming uses, you don't have to get a permit, but the historic society seems to be okay with not having to get permits for these activities. Reference, right, you know, the town attorney was concerned that it would mean they it would be harder for them to go outside of this list that's up there. There's no ability, because then it, they would become more non-conforming. But, um.
We do have the limited, but not limited to language.
But not limited to weddings, concerts, lectures and programs with onsite parking. If you're thinking of having, I don't know, rock concerts or something, it might, it's a concert, right? Anyway, so that's a feature, the, cause the features are like facts about this district, these are the facts on the ground about this district. And the permitted uses are pretty much the same, the accessory dwelling, accessory structure, there's different kinds of dwellings, the family childcare home. Um, the group home, which is required by law to, you have to allow that and home occupations that you're also required by law to allow in residential districts of any sort. Conditional uses, yes.
Elder care facility, the same language as in the north?
Um, elder care facilities in the conditional uses, yeah, it's the same.
So, it's the same language, I just, I didn't remember that.
Yep, it's, it's in conditional use in both districts and we'll look at the definition of it.
I just thought you used a different term for.
Elder care facility. Um.
So museum comes in.
We added the museum because of the round church.
Yeah.
Uh, use. Um, but otherwise, and we added artist and craft studio because there were existing artists and craft studio in the Isaac, anyway. So anybody have any question about that or things they wanna add as conditional uses?
When there was the antique store adjacent to the round church, would that be permitted there today?
No.
No.
The people who lived in these neighborhoods didn't want any commercial operations.
First.
By, by and large, they wanted it to be residential.
Yeah.
So, an artist or craft studio, you know, I mean, it is, could be similar to a home occupation, it could go in maybe as a home occupation, it is a kind of store. Um. But.
No. Said, what, what, what's the antique store use for now?
Ryan had a home office and then he worked, went to work for Beta and now it's just kind of a workshop.
Anybody would like to take that out, artist craft studio?
I think the thought was maybe the maybe there's some craft person who wants to set up the round church or maybe in Ryan's building I was talking about. It seemed like it fit pretty well with the round church, you know.
Yeah.
Does that mean they can't sell their products from the studio?
No, they could sell them there.
No, they can sell them.
I don't know how it would work if they wanted to sell, if they're in there and they wanted to sell other artists that weren't in there. You know, if other artists wanted to bring products to that studio.
Would probably fly under the radar of the zoning administrator.
If that's your business plan, then I, you know, it's the use that we're looking at more than anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they made some things and sold some other things, that would probably be fine. I mean, there are a number of things that just fly under the radar, like in accessory dwellings, you're supposed to. You're supposed to be a relative of the person in the, you know, there's the primary home and the accessory dwelling and one or the other is supposed to be the owner and you know, do we check those, we don't check those, we, we're not gonna go and look at these situations and
We have any?
Accessory dwellings?
What about a music studio?
Music studio, artist, craft studio.
I, yeah, I mean, I always thought that fell under arts.
Yes, definitely.
But, I just thought I'd mention that.
Yep, you can move to that neighborhood.
We have to see what it falls under the definition, I always see you saying.
It's a music studio.
No, I, I already have permission for that, but.
I don't know about the pool, though, I don't know if you could bring that.
I have permission for that too.
Well, where you are.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, it's probably not in the, yeah, no, probably not in the village.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we heard from a lot of
The same.
People who did not want commercial enterprises and that is something that is in both the AR district and the HDR. There's more commercial opportunities, so that is different about these from their, what we pulled them out of, or districts we pulled them out of. All right, and the density is the same?
Yeah.
Back to that for just a minute.
Sure. Um, in light of some, I really appreciate your comments, you know, the value of friendships and the relationships in, in neighborhoods, but I'm also noticing uh, I'm noticing a sort of a societal change in, in many of the people who come to my pool or, you know, come to my music studio.
Yeah.
That there, and this is really the result of the pandemic. A lot of more people are working from home, a lot, uh, they, they're not working regular working hours like, you know, I, that start at eight in the morning, nine, if anything like that, that there's a great deal of flexibility and a lot of people, uh, are just, you know, developing their own schedules and, and ways of doing things and it's, uh, it actually has changed some of the scheduling that I do because I'd set up schedules that I thought would fit with the general working public, it's not it's not the same anymore, as pretty as not.
Right.
And, and I don't think it's gonna go back to where it was.
Yeah, there's, there's a, it, it's like a, the gig economy is, is, is kind of the term that's being bandied about. You know, it's been around for a few decades, a couple decades now, but, yeah, it's all different times a day.
My son did some really interesting research about this because he's a night owl. And, um, I, I think, uh, I've kind of enjoyed this, that, um, apparently uh, as humans, we have inherited from our very ancient ancestors, that some people uh, like to get up early in the morning and go to bed fairly early and then there's another group of people that are kind of in the middle of the day. And then there's another group of people that get up much later and work well into the night. And apparently this descends from the very ancient times when, uh, humans worked, you know, lived as, as a tribe, somebody had to guard the tribe.
Yeah, at night, oh.
And, and so here biologically, we have inherited, uh, some of these tendencies and for those of us who are not morning people like moi, uh, teaching in the public schools was excruciating for about an hour. Uh, and, and I think that it's kind of interesting that, that with some of these newer uh, like not just nine to five jobs, there's more opportunity for people to work with what's actually naturally easy for them, not be oppressed by these people that wanna get up early. So, but, but this, our society is changing in, in these ways.
Yes, there will be changes, many ways. All right, um, same density, the same, minimum lot size is the same. And originally we had contemplated having a bigger lot size because as you pointed out, there are bigger lots down there because it's coming out of AR, it's not coming out of HDR, but we're required, since it's served by water and sewer, to have the same density and minimum lot size, so that's what we got. Um.
Yeah, nothing's really changed in this regard.
Yep, the same slightly reduced frontage, slightly increased lot coverage, height is the same. And we have the same setbacks as we had in, and, you know, there may be more changes there, there may be some building there, there's more room. And the development standards are the same.
Yep. So that's the south.
Any questions about that or? Any questions about that or anybody want to do anything different with that?
But I have a couple comments.
Kathleen?
Kathleen Jen?
Yes, hi, yes.
So, uh, I did know in the section where you referenced in the, in, in the introduction. In the beginning section where you talk about the flood hazard overlay district.
Yes.
You know, there certainly could be, there are wetlands and, um, maybe steep slopes in certain parts of. This district and by calling out the special flood hazard area, will people. Uh, believe that they could, that those other sections of, of wetlands or steep slopes. Wouldn't apply. I just wanted to point that out that, that there are. In the zoning regulations currently, those. Um, are special conditions that would be regulated, so it's just a, uh, something that I'm noting that. By saying flood hazard. Section only, is that, is that what people will focus on and, and not realize that?
Fair enough, yeah.
Actual resource conditions might apply.
Right, well, they will find out when they come to the zoning administrator. And they have a map wetland or, you know, on their property that they cannot build there either. Um, so there are other reasons besides the flood hazard overlay district and we didn't put all of those other reasons in. But they do apply for sure.
I, I appreciate why you did frame it the way you did, but, uh. Just wanted to point that out and certainly I do think this, this neighborhood, there will, it will be more impactful. The new density standards and understand that. That we are following the state new law. And I think that you've done, the planning commission has done a really good job of balancing the state regulations with managing. Our village residential areas with the, with the state changes and, um. Uh, especially because in this particular new zoning district. It is larger lot residential for the most part and to try to accommodate. Uh, the new standards, the density with what we have right now, I think you've, uh, I've been, I think you've done a really good job. And the one, uh, uh, parking, because there's no street parking. But I have, and I know this is state law, but. If people, if, if there are not enough parking spots on the property. Then that could really become a problem for the neighborhood. Uh, where will people park? They could get very creative and, uh, that's just of concern.
Yes, and this is a problem all over.
Yeah.
You know, and, and other towns are thinking about it too, because we don't have public parking. We don't want people to park on the travel portion of the road. We can't require there be more parking. What to do? What's, you know, what is going to happen with the extra cars? So. We're just going to have to see what happens and, you know, see if it is changed or if people start to drive less. I mean, you know, with climate change, we really should all be driving less, so we don't have public transportation. We can't really drive less, but that certainly, that's another conundrum that we're. Thinking about, so we don't know how well the state legislature. Visualized this problem working out, you know, they, they left it up to the towns to muddle through it.
Well, and I think the law applies to municipalities larger than Richmond. Where these standards make a lot of sense and in the size of Richmond. It is a little bit like a, a, a square peg in a round hole for some of these standards and I do think you've done a really big job with. With working through all of those aspects of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? We can talk about the definitions then if we're. Good with those as they, you know, with, thinking a little bit about the setbacks, but. We have heard on both sides, so. All right, so the first thing that we had to do to make these districts, oh, okay, we've got a couple of more questions first. Lisa.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh.
Which Lisa?
We're Matt's.
And Lisa Corey after that.
Oh, okay, thanks. Um, Patricia, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, I'm trying to picture these, uh, the future neighborhoods that we're designing here. And, uh, there's going to be a lot of buildings, inhabited buildings, close to each other, really close in some cases. I think we, we looked at maybe five feet apart, ten feet apart, and I really wonder, I've. I've seen, not seen, but I've read about fires propagating, uh, like wildfire through an urban neighborhood. And of course, these buildings are mostly built out of wood and, and there is dry grass and so forth, and I wonder. What kind of fire code protections do we have here? Have those been sort of tinkered with by the legislature to. Accommodate the closer, uh, structures or is there a problem? Am I overthinking it or? Uh, you know, I, I don't know. Should we get a professional opinion? And it, it went on, why should we have to do this if the state just let us roam freely through these woods here, so? Uh, it's a concern of mine only because, you know, radiant heat. If, if a fire, it's not a structure on fire can generate a lot of radiant heat. I stood by a road in Canada watching a huge barn burn. It was probably a quarter mile, well, not a quarter, maybe five hundred feet off the road. And I could feel the heat from that barn. It was amazing. Of course, all the hay was burning, but it's, it's something that in a close. Mostly, you know, packed neighborhood, uh, could turn into a problem really fast and I don't know what we should do about it.
That we look at the fire code or the safety code? I mean, that's state, isn't it? State regulate?
The select board should look at that and not, not the planning commission. And I say that time cheek to you, Lisa, that's all.
Needs to be in my lap, but yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure, I don't think we're the ones to answer it. We're not the experts, you, you know, but the state. Uh, it doesn't seem like the state has paid any real attention to that, but maybe they think all our existing regulations are fine for serving that. I, I would want to get a professional opinion from somebody at least on that, or do we need more information? Or is there?
Ask Adam.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that. I'll, uh, thank you. But anyway, I still have that concern, so if I get an answer, I'll let you know, uh, in the future.
Sounds good. Lisa Corey.
Um, hi, so I'm, uh, Lisa Corey on, uh, Cochran Road. And I, I don't have a, a lot to say. I, I wanted to thank the, uh, planning commission for coming up with, with this. It, it seems very. Well reasoned to me. I also just wanted to express my support for increased density in town. I think that's. Really important so people have a place to live here. I think, I, I recently saw, uh, the. The overall population in Richmond has hardly changed in the last, I don't know, fifteen years or something. And, uh, and yet if you look at the school population, it's so far down. I think part of that. May be the lack of affordability and, and having ADUs for families starting out. You know, I think it could be a big help for that. Um, you know, certainly I, I'm one of the older folks that, that mourns the, the, the good old days. When I could teach my kids to ride their bikes on Cochran Road, you know, but we're not going backwards. That's, that's not. Where things are at today and it's definitely not where they will be at in the future. So I, I think it's important for us to, to look forward to. Um, to being able to, to support young families and, and getting, um, people who. Who have less money or don't get their homes from, from their family, uh, to be able to live here. Um, and, and so, so if that includes reduced setbacks, I would also be in favor of that. Um, I, so I just wanted to add my voice that, that, you know, I don't, I don't really have new reasons, but. But if we're, you know, if you're taking feedback, that's where I stand on, on that. And, uh, yeah, so that's. That's pretty much it. I'm, I'm, I do kind of wonder about how many ADUs we would actually get here. Because it seems to me it's only a certain kind of individual that will be able to support their own housing and also support building. Additional housing and then becoming a landlord. It, it just seems like it's, there's. I just can't imagine rampant ADUs, but, um, but I, I haven't, you know, studied the, the question.
Well, I can tell you that we, we, we're going to have a program about ADUs at the library. But we put it off until October. We're still going to have the program about ADUs and so I looked into how many people. There were five permits that were given in the last year for ADUs in the town of Richmond, in the whole town of Richmond, so.
That's already something, yeah.
And mostly exactly what they said when I talked to them, they said pretty much the same thing was. We'd like to have the ability to have a family member live there, but we're going to rent it out otherwise. Some of them said they're going to do it as a short-term rental, which. Is another problem that, you know, we're trying to tackle because obviously that takes other long-term rental housing off the market. But anyway, so some people are building ADUs, that's the only point there. So.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Hey, thanks.
Okay, any other comments? Not seeing any other comments. Oh, you took everybody away. Well, um, so. We're going to go through fairly quickly if we can in order of, uh, going through the. Ordinance. Section six point one point two is the next section that we come to that we have had to make a change in. This was the off-road and highway parking requirements where we had to put in the fact that. Only one parking space is required per dwelling unit, that red language. In any district served by water and sewer. And this caused some people to complain that we even had water and sewer. We shouldn't have water and sewer because then we wouldn't have to do any of these. Things that we have to do with Act forty seven, you know. However, there are other problems if you don't have a water and sewer system. We have enjoyed having our water and sewer system, so. Um, anyway, so we added this into the parking section. But that's all we can require because it's different from what's in the table down below, which says other things, but we have just put it in here.
Just for grins, because there is no solution where, um, you know, Baker Street, for example. Is, there's no parking in the winter.
Yep.
And. And, uh, I don't know what the cars are going to do, but they're going to have to find a parking place elsewhere, levitate. And, and for, and for fire and rescue, there, it's, you know, it's already a little bit of an issue, but. In the winter it becomes a real issue because you're not allowed, you're not allowed to park on the street. Parking space for their.
Well.
ADU, it's going to be tough.
And we have the Village Downtown District where no parking is required for any of those.
Right.
Businesses. They have to have a plan. They have to have a plan.
Didn't you say that you can require for an ADU because it is another residence?
You can require a parking space for an ADU, yeah, but maybe his point will come up, which is that nobody is going to do anything in your neighborhood anyway. Because it's already too close together. I don't know.
And, and I would say, you know, with the ADUs, they, they have to share the same access as the principal dwelling.
Curved cut.
Same curb cut, exactly. Typically that would be the driveway coming in and put the ADU in the back. Well, you typically have two spots regardless. So it's, it's kind of a moot point, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah, well, the traffic, I mean, it'll be interesting. See what happens.
But I think oftentimes there'll be two, two vehicles, there'll be one spot for an ADU and two vehicles in the, you know, a young.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to work out, but it's what the law is and I think the. The few years the legislature is going to hear that it's not working out and change it.
Yeah, Morgan.
I sort of just wondered about the wording. It says the residential parking requirement shall be one parking space for twelve. Shouldn't it be, shall be at least?
No, it can, the maximum, that's the maximum that you can require.
It's a requirement.
It's not the maximum parking you can have. This wording is, it's very difficult because the words minimum and maximum here. This is, one is the maximum that you can require, the town can require. Only one, we can only require one. The developer may put more than one if they wish. But we can only require that they put one.
I guess it does seem like it should have a, at least one versus shall have one.
No, it's not at least one. Or you mean you could have none?
Well, you gotta have one.
We're requiring that you have one.
So that, when I read that, it should, it tells me like you can only have one, shall be one parking spot.
Well, it does say a developer may provide additional spaces if they are felt to be needed.
Okay. Put in there. You know, a lot of this, and I'm just ruminating here a little bit, um, it's, is, you know. When a new zoning administrator comes in, you're going to want the zoning administrator to be able to read these with clarity. So that's why we put these clarifying statements and then the late person we do it obviously for, for them also, so trying to make it as, as easy to understand as possible. I, I do this for a living and, and my head spins. I have to spin sometimes. It's mind-boggling. I'll stop.
All right, so that's section six point one. The next se- section that we adjusted. Was section six point thirteen, which is the multifamily housing development standards. Now, we actually put this into the zoning. The last set of, well, the set before last, the residential commercial districts. When we amended them, we put in this because we introduced the fact that three and four unit dwellings. Were going to have to be allowed. So to make it more palatable, we put in some housing standards for multifamily housing. This time around, we altered it a little bit based on Tyler's experience, partly with dealing with it. Um. And other factors that have come to light in the past year. That was a year ago that we put this in, so. This purpose of it is still to protect and enhance the appearance and quality of neighborhoods and to ensure basic standards of living. For the residents of the multifamily dwelling. So we wanted it both so that we don't have substandard housing being built and so that the existing residents. Have some. Protection for their, the appearance of their neighborhood and the nature of their neighborhood. So that's still the point of this. The buildings six thirteen point two, they have to have. If there's a facade that is visible from the road, it has to have an entrance. This is to make it. To make multifamily buildings human scaled. So they have to have doors on the front towards the street. You can't have a blank wall with no entries. This is a problem with multifamily homes. Otherwise, many of these, you know, they come out of the planning world, some of these and. Real world experience. Fire escapes, um, they have to be on the side or the rear. And they have to meet the setbacks. They can't be in the front. This is an appearance thing. Garages and underbuilding parking entries, if there are any, you know, underbuilding parking situations. They have to be either the side or the rear and setback from the front line, just to. Allow the front of the principal structures to be towards the road, um, and be human scale. Um, driveways and parking areas.
Now, we went, we went around on.
We went around on that. Twenty feet in width is the maximum width of the driveway. But it can widen up behind it. Six point.
Pretty wide driveway.
It can't exceed twenty feet, yeah. It's got to be that or less, so can be less. Light trespass is point six. Um. We had comments that people didn't want with a lot of cars were coming. This is, remember, only for multifamily. Standards. This is not for single houses, single family houses or duplex. It's for three or more units in the same building. So don't worry about it being for single-family homes or ADUs. Anyway. You don't want, if a lot of cars are coming and going. You don't want the lights of cars to be trespassing. Uh, you know, to neighborhood, to the neighbors, bothering the neighbors. Privacy, we had a lot of difficulty with, working with the privacy section. Some people felt it was very difficult. Tyler didn't like any of it because he thought it was too difficult.
Subjective, yeah.
It was not objective enough. But we changed the language to. The only thing that is actually required is that by the developer, not the zoning administrator, they have to provide evidence. Such that they have considered. Privacy issues.
Might have setbacks to be written on it. I should consider the five.
And as if we get to it, the lawyers comment. So we run all this by our town attorney to make sure that it's um. Good. He wanted to get rid of the last two items, C and D. The potential for overlook from buildings into neighbor neighboring private outdoor space. Because he felt that was like impossible. You know, if you have windows that see. Over the hedge, uh upstairs windows over the hedge of your neighbor, it's, you're gonna be able to see their backyard, so. The outdoor spaces privacy, he didn't like that. He. Has rewritten the first part to be a little less. I guess subjective and if I can find his comments, which we were gonna get to at the end. He wants to say. To protect the privacy of neighbors by limiting or mitigating to the extent practicable. The ability of those in the multifamily building from being able to see into the windows of the dwelling units on a budding property. He thought that was as far as we could really go with this privacy thing. And he didn't think that the outdoor spaces, that you could really protect them. You know, I mean. That's probably the case now that some of you can see into your neighbors' backyards and side yards and. It's a feature of living fairly close to other people, so.
Want your dogs to be able to run back and forth between yards?
Marking, marking. Um, so anyway, so we softened that, I guess, a little bit and um. I will go with what the attorney says. If he feels that's the defensible thing, then we'll go there.
Then the commission buys in.
And the commission buys in. Yeah, the commission hasn't, as a commission, talked about the lawyers' comments yet. Which we will do probably at our next meeting because we're almost out of time right now, but. Okay. And then we require that there be some outdoor living space for these projects. So that it's not warehousing of people. So each unit either has a little private, small private outdoor space, or there can be a common outdoor space, but there has to be some outdoor space. Associated with this multifamily building. And of course, we're mostly thinking of bigger ones. You know, three and four units, they'll have to abide by this too. If it's three units or more, any building of three units or more will have to abide by this. But um. Everyone will have to have a small amount at least of outdoor living space. That's a quality of life thing for the people in the building and also a neighborhood, you know, appearance thing. Landscaping, there's some landscaping requirements. Front yard, trees, shrubs, ornamental plants, in addition to grass. In a manner characteristic of the other residential properties in the neighborhood. So you can just, the developer can look around and see, well. Everybody has one tree in the front yard and grass, that would be okay. They have to have laundry facilities, they have to have bulk storage, because we don't want people storing their skis and bicycles on the front. Lawn, so there has to be some kind of outdoor uh or either indoor or outdoor bulk storage. I mean, freestanding or within the house, within the building, it can be. Some kind of bulk storage for outdoor kinds of things. Mechanicals and utilities have to be landscaped or screened. And the last two on the next page are waste storage. Has to be screened. Kept within a, you know, a fenced area or screened, and then an EV charging parking space for every ten residential units shall be provided. So for a three to four unit building, you don't have to put in an EV charger, but for ten, you have to put in one. For twenty, you have to put in two EV chargers. We wanted to put in more, some of us, but. It's a start, you know. Eventually, we have to charge all these cars. They're gonna be EVs. So I don't know if people wanna, you know, look at this, that section longer. There's a lot of stuff in there. Most of it was already in. The ordinance before, since last year, but Marilyn.
How much space do we have in the village for these multifamily units?
Not very much. There's hardly any, you know, there're not gonna be very many of them, and they're not gonna be very big.
Okay, so it's.
So it's probably not, you know, going to be much of a problem. But this part. Applies to the whole town. This is a freestanding section. So this is going to apply to multifamily units in the egg res district or the HDR. This is a, this.
So these have to be in the wastewater.
Exactly. This can be anywhere. Yep.
Kathleen has your hand up.
Yes, Kathleen.
Thank you. I just uh wanted to uh chat about the light trespass section.
Yes, yes.
Uh, because we have, we have the experience of a multifamily property where they replaced the. The the lights. Along their driveway and parking areas. And because of the height of those lights. We definitely get light trespass in our house and. Uh, you probably have standards in another section, but I do wanna just mention that. Uh, you know, this, any exterior lighting can also cau- cause light trespass and something, I guess. It'd be good to make sure that they're standard so that, so that if the height of a, of a light fixture is such. That it's going to be causing uh light. Trespass on someone else's property and into their house, that those, those standards can be in place so that. Uh, that can be avoided, because I think if they had designed their lighting fixtures differently. We would not have the light trespass issue that we have. So.
We have no standards?
Yeah, there's those commercial standards for downcast cutoff lighting. Um, there's gotta be some type of shielding with them.
Commercial, though, right?
I believe it's in residential also, um, but but the trick is for that is 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 enforcement. You know, um, they 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 can be there, but you know, obviously, we're not going around looking at each and every one, but we would be reactive to it.
Yeah.
So.
So it may be if you posted a complaint. I mean, we we could look up whether it exists, because there is a light section in here.
They got, they got the lighting plan approved, but it, but it's just how it, how it uh affects us. We, yeah, people necessarily thought about the height of the structures in terms of how the light would dissipate. Uh, across property lines, but it is a factor. So I just wanna mention, you know, it's. Difficult to, like, we have to close our shades at night.
Yeah.
The light comes right in.
Is it all night? That they're on all night?
They're, they're not shut off. That's another feature that you could have. Some kind of uh lights, your. Motion sensing lights that wouldn't come on all night long. So I just wanted to mention that as.
Right. Okay, yeah.
It's, 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 it's an encouraged general guideline, Kathleen, to have no light trespass, but it does. Acknowledge that that's difficult.
So this is improvement.
Yeah.
Well, I know on Tilden Avenue, those lights were like, whoa, and. You know, we'd said something there in front of the Earl's House and boom, within a week, there was a shield on it. Looks down now.
Those are Green Mountain Power lights, the, the streetlights?
I mean, it's, it seems like a pretty inexpensive modification that they do, and it, it was huge, the difference.
Yeah, Green Mountain Power did the light right across the road because it was shining in Penny Rant's house and. I think it's like, for, after listening to her complaining, I think they came right out and put a, a shield on that one too.
Yeah, they're, they're surprisingly reacting. And they, they react pretty well, pretty fast.
These, these are private ones.
But it's worth, worth considering, because it is enough to like, when they put that new one up, it's like, whoa. You're watching your, you know, private movie.
Yeah, well, uh.
And I think they, they consider they are shielded, but the, but it's plus the height of the poles is such that the shield.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
BB guns help? No, I should say, I'm just kidding.
Um, okay, so any more questions about the multifamily development standards? We are at nine o'clock. We have a few more things to go over. I don't know if people wanna stay and finish them or.
You continue the public hearing? You have to rewarn or?
Well, we rewarned here, but we'd have, they'd have to, yeah, we'd have to rewarn it, yeah.
Probably fifteen minutes.
Still open. We haven't closed the public hearing yet, so.
No.
What's left to talk about?
Okay, so we just have a few things to talk about more. One is the addition of a residential density section, which really. Only explains what residential density is and what it means. Because we haven't really had much residential density in the ordinance before. So it just says things like a single-family home. Counts as one dwelling unit. A single-family home with an ADU still only counts as one dwelling unit. We have had this. Explained to us. We don't know why the legislature has elected to take that stand, but they want ADUs and they don't want them to come. You know, to run afoul of the density requirements. So they just said, well, we're just not gonna count them as an additional. Density. However, a duplex does count as two dwelling units. And each dwelling unit in a multifamily unit counts as one dwelling unit. Well, that makes sense. That's intuitive. If you have two single-family dwellings on one lot, like in the residential commercial district, you can now have. That counts as two units. Each one of those is permitted an ADU, still only counting as two units.
I think there's a fair amount of things to talk about in that topic. But.
Well, it's only explaining what we've been told we're allowed to do. So.
Well, I, I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm sure you'd probably like to get through all that stuff tonight, but I, I, I don't know if.
We've, what else is there? Okay, Dave.
And I don't wanna hold you up because I said my piece and I appreciate it, but um, just to get my head around this detail, so. Let's say somebody had a half-acre lot.
Yep.
They could do one of two things. They could build a second dwelling unit on the lot.
Not in this district. The only district.
Could they, or but, or they would have to subdivide.
Exactly.
Okay, they couldn't, they couldn't do two on the lot and own the land and. Anymore. Well, they could own the land, but it would just have to be subdivided.
Exactly.
Okay, and meet all the requirements. Okay.
The only place where two single-family dwellings on a single lot are allowed are in the residential commercial districts. The two of them, the Gateway. And the Village Residential Commercial, which is like East Main Street. They, that went in there and the neighborhoods didn't want that, and you included. Didn't want that to be allowed, that two principal structures would be allowed on a single lot, but you could subdivide it if you had enough land.
You, you still have to have enough land to put the two principal structures on to begin with.
Right, so you'd have to have enough land. Uh, but they each get an ADU and that doesn't count as more than two units. A group home, which is required by law to be allowed in a residential district, it, a group home allows up to eight residences. Counts as one dwelling unit. An elder care facility, which is a definition we're gonna get to in a minute. Or supported housing or a retirement community residential use counts as one dwelling unit for each eight residents.
There's a theme going on here.
Yes, so eight residents in a, you know, in a group setting is a one dwelling unit. And then those other things, emergency shelters, hotels, inns, bed and breakfasts are not subject to density requirements. Single-family dwellings shall be permitted accessory dwelling units. And duplexes or multifamily dwellings shall not be permitted accessory dwelling units. And then we have a couple of definitions. Duplex, we're. Adding that in because we didn't have one already in the zoning. It's, it's uh two dwelling units in the same building with a shared. Wall or floor or ceiling. So duplex can be one up, one down, or two next to each other. Where neither one is an accessory dwelling. That's the, from the state statute. As amended by Act forty-seven. Current definition for multifamily dwelling is okay, which is three or more dwelling units in the same building. And. Basically, a definition of residential density, which we have not had in this ordinance before, is. How many dwelling units are allowed per unit of area? That's what this sheet is explaining. And it, this is just to explain to people how. To think about density, since we haven't had it before. So. That's that. Any questions about that? Okay, we have a few new definitions to add. Elder care and related. So the reason that we created a definition for elder care facility is, was because we have a supported housing. Definition, which is a residential facility that provides other services to the residents. People in the neighborhoods wanted to have it restricted to certain kinds of supported housing. The kinds of supported housing that we have the services and the resources to provide supervision of. So we. Restricted it to the care of older people. Which can be nursing homes, assisted living, and hospice facility. Um, so. And this was based on a long discussion that people had about whether we should have. Like halfway houses, or, you know, if we just allowed in these neighborhoods, supported housing. We could have many different kinds of supported housing, like transition. You know, out into the community. Transition from prison, which is. Called um. Transition after major life traumas or something like that, anyway, or. You know, drug rehab facilities, well. Some of those are allowed in a group home because it's considered to be a disability, having an. Some of those are allowed in a group home because it's considered to be a disability, having an addiction. So up to eight people, you can't prevent. A group home being in a residential neighborhood with up to eight people for any kind of disability as defined by the state. But you could provide such that bigger than eight. You wouldn't have because you're only in these neighborhoods allowed to have elder care facilities. Lawyer thought that was fine. So. We did have people who wanted, who thought you should have any kind of supported housing, you know, people who are recovering from drug addiction, need supported housing somewhere. But it. The people in the neighborhoods who spoke with us didn't think that was appropriate to have in a neighborhood and we don't have the resources to monitor them or. To make sure that the neighbors are safe or whatever you want to worry about. So that's the elder care facility. The point of that definition. The state has a lot of requirements about this as it turns out. Recovery residences, there are these things called recovery residences, there are. So we worked through those state statutes. And. Put together this elder care definition.
Are these things that they're saying they must be included?
Group homes. Must be included anywhere where there are full-time residential zoning where this, but that's only up to eight people.
And what about a recovery resident?
And the recovery residence is the same, it's. Up to eight people, but those are, have to be certified by the Vermont Department of Health. And they have some of the support services of the state. Supposedly.
Okay.
But you have to allow them. So we hope that the state is supervising and supporting them.
I, I honestly don't think that this is an issue, just in the sense of the fact that there's no support services here for them.
Right.
Yeah, so, uh, but we have to put it in here.
And the only ones that the people in these residential neighborhoods wanted were to have the old people. Be able to be in the residential neighborhoods where their people are, you know, their kids and what have you. So. Um, the only comment that the attorney made was. He would start it at fifty-five instead of sixty.
Instead of sixty, right.
So, geez, okay.
It's only.
I mean. Whatever.
I span shortened for some reason.
And also with the elder care facility, not every bed has to be fifty-five or older because there are some younger people who have disabilities that need. An elder, you know, like hospice.
Yes.
Or dying or whatever.
Sure.
So it's just that the majority of the beds, this is another thing that the zoning department is not going to go around checking really to make sure that fifty-one percent of the beds. Are old people.
Yeah.
But if you're going to put one of these things up, you have to say that it's going to be, and you know, really. Hospice and nursing homes are mostly filled with old people, right? Not us yet, but.
As far as I know.
Nice, as far as you know.
Um, so anyway, that's, that's a lot of work, but at least, yeah, we don't.
Yeah.
That, that's all the statutes that we went through to develop those. And the only other thing that we would like to have your comments about is there's been a problem with the zoning with this word structure. The word structure in our zoning is defined as an assembly of materials for occupancy of you, or use. Which means anything is a structure. And there was a continuous problem with people saying, is a driveway a structure? Is a parking area a structure? Is a patio a structure? Is a sidewalk a structure?
The definition.
So. We have separated out things that are on the ground versus what you would traditionally think of as a structure, which sticks up above the ground. And so the main point of these definitions is to clarify it for the zoning administrator. As to what a driveway is, because our current ordinance is ambiguous about whether driveways, for instance, are. Have to abide by the setbacks or the lot coverage. It says it differently in two different places. So we've made it clear that structures have to abide by setbacks. And structures are anything that sticks up above the ground and also swimming pools. On-ground improvements are things that don't stick up above the ground and they do not have to abide by setbacks, but they do have to abide by lot coverage. Because they're impervious surfaces. So a driveway, parking area, patio, sidewalk, walkway. Count as lot coverage, but they don't count for setbacks. You put the driveway right up to your property line.
Prefer that you don't.
Yeah, well. So that's what this is all about. It's to clarify that part of the zoning.
So in the, in the past, it was unclear.
It was unclear because in structure, well, I can read you. Problem with it. What was unclear was whether. Structures included driveways and parking areas or not. And whether that, whether they, that was included in setbacks or not. Um.
I kind of, I personally feel like having a car parked on the truck, on the property line is as. Bad as having a structure on the park, park, property line.
I, I, I don't disagree. It's my current situation in Burlington right now.
Right.
Well, so in our current definition of set, setback. Yeah, so that would be a point. Do we want, you know, do we want driveways, et cetera? In structure, it says it does not include driveways and parking areas. Structure does not include that. In setbacks, it says. That this is the distance from a lot line. Including from patios or parking areas. But the way this ordinance has been interpreted to date is that they are not included in setbacks.
Correct.
So.
Wouldn't you want the five foot non. Not, not, you know, non, non-dwelling setback?
For a parking area or a driveway? I don't know. What do you think, Gary? You have an opinion about that?
But. I think just from my standpoint, it gets harder to. Fit a single family house, a lot, if you can't. Bring it up together. I mean, there's a lot of places share that driveway right here on Church Street. The two driveways are really one big driveway.
They're right next to each other.
Yeah, and that's true.
Which is part of the.
And a lot, and a lot of driveways do lead to structures, i.e. a garage, which has to be set, meet the setbacks also. That's the norm, but not, there are exceptions to it.
Yeah, so we went round and round about that.
Well, no, I'm just saying, it's, I mean, nothing is perfect, I mean.
Right, there are going to be situations where it's good, situations where it's not very good.
There's a bunch of common driveways in our neighborhood.
Right.
Yeah.
Where a lot of people are going to try to park in because it's not enough. Um, so that's really all that we have. Uh, we were going to talk about if we have time, but we don't have time, but lawyers' comments. He didn't make many comments. The comments were very minimal that he made. Um, and so the planning commission just has to agree that these are, you know, he put like. Building lot line, every time we said the front of the building, he said, no, it's the front of the building lot line because the front of the building may not face the road exactly. It may be catty corner. So the front is where the line, where the nearest point of the building. A line that's parallel to the road. So that's fine, you know, we put in the building.
Line definition.
Building line definition, he wanted that. He wanted to add to the extent practicable on some of the multifamily housing standards because he felt they were too onerous. Um. The privacy thing we went over that he wanted to take away those two things about looking into the yard. He wanted to know what we wanted to say about things like tennis courts, pickleball and basketball courts that were paved surfaces, but that they had. Um, posts and things. So we added the language any other paved area to impervious because they are impervious. They do not let water through. And they are also on-ground improvements if they're man-made paved areas. Which are subject to lot coverage, but not setbacks. So. Um, yep, so anyway, he really had very little to say about it, about the substance of it and. So I think we have to wrap up because we're all getting a bit glaze.
I think Chris left, right?
Exactly.
We still have a call.
No, we can't go beyond nine o'clock on the dot. Chris is here, so.
Well, I must say I'm getting a little blotto brain.
All right, so anyway, really thank you all for coming, um. We will, at our next meeting, probably approve this, this end.
Well, this shows an awful lot of work. You, you've put in an awful lot of work here. Yeah. I know that, well, I know from working on these things too, that when you sit down, you get involved in like one definition about it. Like what's a parking lot? I mean, you can go on.
Oh, it's a rabbit hole.
Well, and the supported housing was crazy. But that was just amazing. Lisa, you have a final comment before we wrap this.
Yeah, one and a half. I echo Allison's comment, by the way. You guys have done a great job. I mean, wading through the stuff is only for the tough. And one thing, just one word.
Coming to you now, so.
Yeah, thanks. Now we'll see if we can defer, uh, just one word, erected? Would that help with structures? I mean, the driveway is not erected. Everything that sticks up off the ground is erected, more or less, so. Seems like somebody's missed the opportunity to use a verb that really is, has one meaning. So just a thought. Take it or leave it.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Lisa.
We won't talk about the noun, just the verb.
All right. Okay, so, um, from Mark or Ian, would you like to make?
Kathleen's got her.
Oh, Kathleen, and then we'll have a motion to close the public hearing. Go ahead, Kathleen.
You have to close the public hearing or is it, is it?
Do we want to close the public hearing? Does anyone else want to make any comments, uh? Are you interested in continuing this discussion, Kathleen, or no?
No, I, no. It's just that you have to close it.
Yes, so for Mark or Ian, I'd like to have a motion that we close the public hearing.
I motion that we close the public hearing.
Hey, thank you, Mark.
Second.
Allison, seconds. Okay, I forgot you were here.
I didn't.
You must be tired, Virginia.
Yeah. And.
A little punchy.
I realized we didn't even open the publication.
Let me open it.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all so much and, um, we'll be sending this on just to. Planning commission will look at the lawyer's comments, which we haven't done, and then we'll send it on to the select board.
Do you want to do that resolution?
What?
Do you want to do the resolution, send it up?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just, it just gets complicated, it's all.
Yeah. Oh.
You know, it's like.
With the amendments made.
It's happening.
Tonight, but do we want to talk about any of these things?
Cause it's certainly, or anyway, it's like.
It's, we've closed the public hearing at this point.
It's just like everything is, it's like.
So Mark and Ian and Allison.
We're on West Main Street.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want to move to send this with the amendments? From the lawyer to the select board now, or would you like to talk about it at the next meeting and any comments that we might have heard? And the lawyer's comments, do we want to talk further about it or would we like to send it on?
What were the amendments again?
Well, see, you know.
Yeah, that's just it. See, I, I can't even recall what they all are. So it'd be like, hmm, maybe we could.
I think we should just close the public hearing and in a minute we'll vote on that motion to close the public hearing and then. You know, finalize it and approve it and send it on at our next meeting.
Okay.
Is that good with people?
Yeah, it's unfortunate, but yes, I agree. It's probably the best call.
Yeah, okay, so all in favor of, uh, closing the public hearing should say aye.
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 Aye, okay, so the public hearing is closed and we'll just finalize what we're sending to the select board at our next meeting.
I, I just thank you for going back to meetings in this room for at least some people.
Yeah, you like that?
Uh, way better.
So much better.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, hybrid. Well, we can do hybrid.
Yeah.
I know we'll have Allison if we have it here. We might not have her if it's, if, if it's only a resume, so.
That, I try, I don't know.
Thank you everyone for coming, by the way, on the meeting, uh, we're, the meeting is over, so.
I'll see you at the cement pond.
The cement pond, great.
We'll see you all on August seven, August seven.
Okay, so we're adjourned.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you for being here.
Night, everyone.